Okay. Call the meeting to order the Wilmington City Council. I'd like to welcome all those who are with us here this evening and all those who are watching us at home. Thank you for taking an interest in your government. This time I'd like to introduce Chaplain Leona Jones of the Wilmington Police Department for the invocation and ask everyone to stand or remain standing afterwards for the Pledge of Allegiance. Chaplain Jones?
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you, for this is the day that you have made. I pray for the meeting on tonight. Thank you, oh Lord God. Give our council members wisdom and guidance as they deliberate on the issue before them, that it will be done in decent and order. We thank you for this great city. We thank you for the peace in this city, and we thank you for keeping this city safe. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no presentations this evening, so our first order of business is our consent agenda, items one through four. Are there any items that any council member would like to hear separately? If not, what are the wishes of this council? We have a motion approved by Councilmember Waddell, seconded by Councilmember Joyner. Discussion. All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes unanimously. That brings us to our next item of business, which is our public information segment. We have three speakers that have signed up to speak with us this evening. Each speaker will be allotted five minutes. Our first speaker is Mr. Dawson Gage, who will be speaking to us about Save the Telephone Exchanges. Is Mr. Gage here? Okay. Our second speaker is Mr. Khan from out east. Talk about make Wilmington great again. It's Mr. Khan here. Okay. Don't see Mr. Khan. Our next speaker is Mr. Joshua Trader, who will speak to us about lack of following and enforcing dog leash laws. Mr. Trader, welcome.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council Members and Staff. My name is Joshua Trader and I reside at 1015 Nut Street here downtown. I'm here today to discuss the refusal of dog owners within this community to comply with local leash laws, as well as the lack of enforcement by New Hanover County Animal Control and Police Department, which further enables this non-compliance. So detail the event, which is not an isolated event, but the event that brings me here today is on Thursday, February 6th. At about 4:45 PM, I took my dog, as well as my roommate's dog, which are two very small dogs, less than 20 pounds, out for a walk. About two minutes into my walk, we were approached by three off-leash dogs in the gated community where I reside. This happened having, after previously sent an email to the property management about the consistent issue of unleashed dogs on the property. I blocked the dogs from making contact with mine and told the owners to lease their dogs. I then continued my walk after voicing my concern to the leasing office into the Riverfront Park. As I went to the park, I witnessed more off-leash dogs, and when I attempted to leave the area, a lady and her two off-leash dogs, one a Great Dane, the other one another large breed, ran over, giving me little time to react. The dogs were jumping at my dogs while I was yelling for them to stay back and yelling for the owner to get them away. She failed to gain control of her dogs, and this is what happens when large dogs' prey drive is activated after seeing smaller dogs. When I was able to safely remove myself from the situation, I then called the police. And mind you, that there are signs all over the park stating that dogs must be leashed pursuant to City Code Section 6-3.1, and I did take a photo of that, just so you can see that. And then Animal Control was too busy to respond, so an officer was dispatched. The officer claims to have told the aforementioned woman and the other dog owners to lease their dogs. However, while speaking to the officer, I pointed out that the dog was still running loose. She shrugged her shoulders and said, "What do you expect me to do? Sight and give out fines to everyone who does not lease their dogs?" And this is actually exactly what I expect from a law enforcement officer, especially after defending myself and my pets from an unpredictable situation. So the next day, I went to the police station to retrieve a report of what happened, and the officer failed to create one. Corporal Peterson of Animal Control and Lieutenant Nichols of the Police Department stated that if Officer Crane gave a verbal warning when something was done, then something was done. However, that is not true. If the dogs remain off-leash even in her presence, and she also failed to document the innocent or incident, and if there's no tracker of verbal warnings, then no documentation of the incident was created, so the issue will still persist because no action is being taken. They then agreed to my statement after I explained that. So to provide insight into the urgency of my concern, in 2019, a German Shepherd attacked me. I still have a permanent scar on my inner thigh from a bite. In 2021, I had to defend my dog from two off-leash rottweilers, who then killed a Maltese puppy less than a month later, even after I reported the incident. In 2023, here in downtown, my roommate's dachshund was attacked by an off-leash pit bull here in Wilmington, having to be rushed to emergency vet in Raleigh. These are just things that just should not happen. We should not be waiting for people or other animals to be injured or killed before taking action. Being proactive is better than being reactive. Without effective law enforcement on this issue, it's likely to continue. So my proposed solutions are as follows: corrective action by giving out citations and/or fines. If there are going to be verbal warnings, then they should be tracked in a system. Installing clear signs downtown, especially along the Riverwalk and Riverfront Park, where I see most of the sightings of off-leash dogs. And when someone calls Animal Control or Police, the issue should always be taken seriously. And lastly, if feasible, constructing a dog park downtown for dog owners who prefer their dogs to run off-leash. And that is all. So thank you for your time. I hope positive action is taken to address make safety concern, which will benefit the community largely. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. All right, that concludes our public information segment. Our next item of business is our public hearings. Item PH1 is an ordinance directing the housing inspector to vacate, close, and repair or demolish a dwelling in 804 Russell Alley as unfit for human habitation pursuant to Article 5, Chapter 16 of the City Code, and directing that a notice be placed there on prohibiting its use or occupancy. At this time, I'd like to recognize the City Manager, Mr. Tony Cottle. Mr. Cottle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protam, members of council. Brian Renner, our Chief Code Enforcement Officer, will overview this item for us.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protam, Council. The property, we're talking about three properties tonight total. This is the first of the three. Just for context, 804 Russell's Alley, 905 Wooster, and 909 Wooster are owned by the same family. The family is here tonight. So as we're talking about this, that's in the context that we have three properties owned by the same family. So this is 909 Wooster. It's just under 600 square feet, single-family house. Owners are the heirs of Benjamin, or George Benjamin Age. Oh, he's jumping. It's a track pad. So this is the view from Russell's Alley. For those of you that are not familiar with Russell's Alley, it's on the corner of Eighth and Wooster. So this, for this case, the initial inspection took place in October 2023, came from a complaint. At that time, it was occupied by one of the family members and some other people, and has since been vacated. We took it to administrative code hearing in June of 2024. You can see the list of family members there that attended. The order was issued in July. There was a compliance date of October of 2024. That compliance date, in large part, was because it was occupied and did not have water service, and there were a lot of sanitation and other structural issues with the building. After the hearing, there were some minor efforts to repair. We've been in communication with the family, and the property's since been vacated. In 2024, the tax value was $58,900. Our estimated cost for repair was 34,945, which puts us at 59%, which is dilapidated by the city's minimum housing code. So this is in order to vacate, close, repair, or demolish the dwelling. Now, these are the sections that are outlined in the minimum housing code. The findings of facts is included in this packet. Some here, some here are photos from January 29th, when we did the inspection and we found the building to be vacated. During the time of this inspection, somebody that had been saying there had dogs inside the house, and those dogs were taken by Animal Control. So here's the view from Russell's. You can see some issues with the roof from here. This is the backside, tarp on the roof, siding issues, rotten wood, and the rotten framing. This is the inside of the house. On this inspection, we found a lot of dog feces and things like that inside the building. Pretty much the entire inside of the house is in an unsanitary condition. There hasn't been water service here since June of 2024, for reference, and it was occupied until fairly recently. The conditions have deteriorated since our last inspection in October. And here's some, showing some of the issues with the ceilings coming down. So where we're at with this one, we have been in contact with the family, and they're here tonight, so I'll let them speak to what their plans are. But our recommendation is 90 days to repair or demolish this dwelling, and I'm here if there's any questions about our case.
Mr. Mr. Robinborg?
I saw a light on, looked like a ceiling light. So there is electrical service?
There is electrical service, yes.
Is, is, these pictures were taken just a couple of weeks ago?
Correct, on the 29th, yes.
So there'd been no effort to remove this stuff from the house, or?
No, there's been no change on this dwelling since the 29th.
Early on, was there any instructions given to this family, or a list of items that they needed to do to bring it into compliance?
Correct. At the hearing, they were provided with a findings of fact and an order. That findings of fact listed all the minimum housing code violations and essentially created a punch list of things that we would look to be repaired to meet minimum housing code. And at that time, it was occupied. Since then, it has become vacant, and as I said, the conditions have deteriorated from where they were back when we took the hearing.
When was that meeting?
That hearing took place in July.
Of '24?
Of '24.
And at that point, there was somebody living in it?
Correct.
And when did the water service get disconnected?
It was disconnected, I believe, in June.
So the meeting was in July, and the border had been disconnected for a full month, and there was somebody living in it?
Correct, and there was an order to vacate that expired in October. They did not vacate by October. They actually just vacated here at the end of the year around Christmas time.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Renner.
Mr. Joyner?
Can, I'm sorry, did you say how this was initiated? How did this come onto your radar?
It was from a complaint. The other properties that we're going to be talking about were a complaint from the Police Department. This one came in, we inspected it the next day, but it was a neighbor complaint, I would say. It was marked as anonymous.
So one neighbor complaint, and then two were initiated by police?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Yeah, Mayor Protam?
I think you said something about an October date. I can't remember. I thought you said the last time it was inspected was in October. Is that what I heard you say?
Correct. We inspected it around the expiration of the order. So here you see, the order, the initial order was issued in July of 2024, which had a compliance date of October 14th of 2024. That order included to vacate it by October 14th, and also to have repaired or demolished it by October 14th. They made a few efforts to repair. There were some shingles put on the roof, some floor system, things like that, but nothing satisfactory. So yeah, that October would have been the first compliance date that we gave them.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Thank you, sir. At this time, I'll recognize the homeowners. Homeowners want to come up?
Good evening. I am Pamela Age, one of the heirs of the property. And I am here today because there were some obstacles that we came into when we were trying to repair this property. That October, we did meet in June, and at the time when we met, everybody was at the meeting, but there was an heir inside of the property that was not being conducive to getting it fixed. And I called Brian, as well as the Police Department, multiple times, trying to get that heir removed. He refused, and just recently, he was obtained for breaking the law. And so that's where he has been removed out of the property. The other properties were trying to get those items fixed as we moved on, because we need an agreement upon, I mean, from everybody. In the meantime, I have, we've obtained an attorney, Harold Stevens, and we're filing a partition, and it will be in place in the next 10 days, and he will be in touch with Brian.
Okay.
So Mrs. Age?
Yes.
The attorney, Mr. Stevens?
Harold Stevens.
Harold Stevens, he is, I guess, getting the property, all the legal heirs, to sign the document to, for you folks to go get a loan to fix this property? What's going to happen? Let's just, we're going to talk about one property at a time, fortunately, because we have to do all three separately. But on this particular property, do you all have any plans to fix this, or you're going to demolish this property?
Well, in the process of filing the partition, it's trying to get everybody on one accord, to agree with what we're going to do with it, and that's either to repair it, to get a loan to repair, or to either sell.
Okay. Is there, is there a bank or anybody that you have spoken to about this particular property?
I'm sorry. Please repeat.
Is there a bank or anybody that you have spoken to about this as of yet?
Okay, at this point, the partition, we're in the process of just trying to make sure that we locate all heirs and making sure that we have everybody inside of the paperwork. When I talked to him today, that's what he was working on, and he just said that in the next 10 days, it would be filed.
And the heir that was residing in this particular property that's now, I guess?
Locked.
Locked up. Does he have to sign off on this also as an heir to the property?
I, I think he may, but that is part of the reason why we're having to file a partition.
Okay, very good. Anybody else? Yes, yes, sir. Ms. Spears?
Ms. Age, I know it's three properties that we're going to discuss, and I may be jumping the gun just a little, but do, do you all own all three properties flat out?
Yes.
No, so there's no money owed?
I, I think there may be some liens on it, but yeah.
But, but you do know, I mean, if there's, there's a lien, and if you, you all decided to sell that, the lien would be deducted.
Deducted from the.
Okay, so I just want to make sure you know that. And then also, while I'm looking at this fact finding, and this question might be for Brian as well, but there, there are some things that are just, I mean, they're not troubling to me, but they're, they're not co-violations. I mean, and they're not co-violations that you can't fix, like light switches not having a cover.
Right.
So, I mean, just, and I say this to everybody that comes, just a little sweat equity would go a long way, and I'm, I'm opposed to loans.
I understand.
I mean, unless they're student loans. I got a lot of them, but outside of, outside of a student loan, I mean, because you own your properties flat out, you know what I mean? And you don't want to get in a hole, but you also don't want to, you don't want to be in this situation, where you're facing your property being demolished, or. I'll just be honest, from what I've looked at, it's just, you own some properties that some people want, and they're complaining so they can get it.
So that's been some of our conversations that we have had, and unfortunately, the heir that was inside of the property was not cooperative, because as we sent out adjusters or people to go in and work on it, they were pretty violent, and they wouldn't allow them to get in. So we were dealing with obstacles. I know I called the Police Department, and they said they couldn't help me. I called the Sheriff Department, and they said they couldn't help me. I called Brian and was like, "What can, can you help me?" And he actually recommended some attorneys for me, because we could not get him out, because he was an heir, and he was refusing to allow us to go in. We had family go to the house on three occasions, and I think we were able to go in the first time and do a little bit of work. We even tried to work with the occupant to pay the water bill, and they refused those things as well. So there was effort put forth. He was just difficult.
Now, Mr. Mayor, there are other family members raising their hands, and I can't give them.
If you want to speak, because this, this is an opportunity for you folks to speak, just if you line up right there and just, you can tell us, give us your, your opinion. Just come up to the microphone and please state your name for the record, and we'll, speaking to the, to the microphone. Just pull it down, please.
Sorry, I think I'm vertically challenged.
That's all right.
My name is Keisha Malet. I'm Anthony Malet's wife, the heir that was at the property. And like he said, it's just a little bit that can be fixed. We have been fixing it piece by piece, little bit by little bit. And there was a lot of issue with the other heirs, however. The other heirs did not appear until recently. During this whole time, they've been living at the house. No one else has been there. We've taken care of the taxes on the property, all the repairs and everything for over a decade, ourselves. And we are having some financial difficulties, so it has been done piece by piece. And like you said, it is coming from people in the neighborhood, because several new houses have been built. And I just wanted to make that clear. And the inspector can attest to it. We have been making progress.
Okay.
I guess it's just not quite as fast. But we have been making progress and doing the best we could with the property. And like I said, we've always done it on our own.
Okay. Very good.
And if you look back at the tax records, you'll see who's been paying them and for how long, and all the other repairs. And there's currently no lien on the house. There was, which me and my husband and his mother took care of ourselves. And it was in the tune of $6,000, but that has been resolved.
Mr. Robin? That was very good that you did that. I mean, that's, that's one obstacle that you're facing. But what concerns me is whatever we do here tonight, if we grant you the time to do the things you want to do, that house needs to be cleaned out and secured, and that's, I mean, there is certainly a cost involved with that, and nobody's going to do it for free. But those pictures were just taken two weeks ago, and, and it's in pretty tough shape. So I would hope that you could find a way to, to get it at least cleaned out. That would certainly make your job of going in there and.
I have a group of people who will help me clean it out, and we can get it boarded up until we can make the necessary, do everything that we're supposed to do. We have a list of the infractions that we have.
Yes, ma'am.
And if we could have some time, we could make that happen.
That's, that's great. Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you for listening.
Mayor Protam?
Yeah. I, I too agree with Councilman Robinborg, that this doesn't look like it just happened recently, okay? I'll just be upfront. It looked like it's been a mess for, for a minute. All right, that's number one. Number two, my question to you is, how many heirs are tied up in this property?
If I'm not mistaken, 11.
11, okay. And with, with heir property, you know, everybody's got to come, come to an agreement. And what I'm hearing you say is that you guys are talking more, and you're going to come to some kind of agreement soon. Now, the lawyer, what I understand is, he's going to just, he, he already knows who the heirs are, right? Doesn't he? What's he going to do? What's the lawyer going to do?
So.
In your mind?
In the midst of all of this, Anthony and his wife were not always willing participants in some of the things that the family was wanting to do. So was, that was one of the reasons why I seek the attorney, because I knew that we were going to have a hard time getting them on board to agree to anything. So that's, that's why we have him. Just, that's why the partition has come up.
And I just would like to say, in my husband's defense, the participation wasn't as much, because it was always understood that this property was his, and like I said, no one else had stepped forward or done anything pertaining to the property until those other houses were built, and the worth was realized of that actual property. No one else stepped forward, did anything, paid any taxes, so much as put a nail in the house until this particular time. And so my husband did feel a little weird about the situation, because it was always understood.
Right.
And like I said, he's been in that house over probably about two decades now.
This house here that we're?
Yes, sir, that particular house. Yes, sir.
I think one of the things that, that if I understand about heir property is, it doesn't matter who pays the taxes or who lives in it, when so-and-so dies, unless there's a will or something, it's divided up to the heirs. So, I mean, I understand your, your, your challenge.
Yes, sir. And from what I understand, there's some discrepancy on that, because according to what I've been told, that on the actual signature, it doesn't say senior or junior, and so from what I understand, they just assumed it was senior, but.
Okay, so you guys, you guys got to work that out.
Yeah, there are some discrepancies to that part, because it's just signed George Benjamin Age, not senior or junior.
Okay.
And the guy at the city said they just assumed it was senior, because he has other properties, but it's always been understood in the family.
Okay.
I'm just speaking for him, because he's not able to speak for himself at this moment.
Yes, ma'am. Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Joyner?
Thank you.
I just want to clarify, ladies, the two of you, you both agree, though, that you both want an extension?
Yes, that's what we agree on.
Okay. And then the gentleman that she's talking about, Mr. Anthony, he is an heir on all three of the properties that we're discussing tonight?
He, he is.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Yes, thank you.
Did you have something to say, sir? Your name, sir? Excuse me, just speaking to the microphone, we'll get it.
Timothy Age.
Timothy Age?
Yep.
All right, I am an heir of that property. It belonged to my father. There is no dispute or nothing about it. My brother was claiming it, but it wasn't his. That's why his son thought it was his.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm just letting you know. It belonged to my dad.
Okay. So on the deed, it just says George Age and Gladys Stevens. Gladys Stevens was the, was the wife, and George Age was the husband. And so the, Anthony and his wife thought that, because it didn't say junior or senior, that it meant that it was the juniors, but George Junior would not have been married to his mother, if that makes sense.
Okay, Mr. Waddell?
I understand there's probably, when you, when you're dealing with multiple heirs, there's always some level of familial disagreement, and I'm certainly commiserate with that. I believe what's before us tonight is, and I think what all of you want is some more time. What's the specific request of us from, from, from you?
So I know right now, the city has said 90 days. Can we have six months? If we could get it cleaned up and boarded up, just so that we can get through the partition and the mediation to help us get to that place?
And will that request be for each house 180 days across the board?
Please.
Okay. That, that's helpful. Thank you.
Yes.
Ms. Age, is, is, is Mr. Stevens here with you tonight? The attorney, Harold Stevens?
He is not here. I, no, I did not ask him to come tonight.
Okay. So, so the way I, I guess I'm gathering this with all the family, different family members that are here, you have 11 heirs to this piece of property, all three properties?
Yes.
There is some dispute as to who owned the property. The gentleman just stepped up and said it was so-and-so's property. You said there's somebody else. So you're all asking for a petition of the property to determine who has the legal rights to the property?
As well as having some mediation there to get to a place where our family can decide on this one thing, and whether it is repairing or selling, you know, but that's part of our partition that we're filing.
And part of the discussion amongst the different family members, and I would imagine there is some agreement on some, and there's some disagreement from what I can gather on others. Is that, is that a fair statement?
Somewhat.
Okay.
We, we've only had a couple, only a couple of family members that's been the outliers.
Okay, and so there's, right now, as we speak, as far as you know, there are 11 heirs, total heirs, and all of those heirs, do they live here in Wilmington, or they are, I'm sure there's some around the country, maybe?
Right now, they're, I'm residing in Raleigh, North Carolina, and then we have an uncle that is in Texas.
In Texas, and everybody else then resides here in Wilmington, as far as you know?
Pretty much, yes.
Okay. All right, very good.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Please.
There are actually at least 13 heirs right now. I'm sorry to correct you, but just that we know of at this point. And I know that because the next two properties that are on Wooster Street, we've just done condemnations on with regard to obtaining construction, temporary construction and right-of-way easements with regard to the Dawson Wooster project, and the reason that we had to do the condemnation actions then to get that right-of-way and temporary construction easements was because of the heir. to get that right-of-way and temporary construction easements was because of the heir issues. Um, and there was nobody that we could issue the checks to and we didn't know who to pay and that kind of thing. So, um, we had to do the condemnations. Um, so, but like I said, they're small, um, and just for TCEs and, and things of that nature. So, um, they, they don't terribly impact the property, but I can tell you that there's at least 13 that we're aware of at this point.
Well.
So.
Excuse me for one second. I'd like to ask a question. So if we have three properties, all with the same family, I've never, in all my years down here, I've never had a situation on a, on the condemnation process where we've had three or four properties, all owned by the same group. And they're asking for an extension of six months to see if they can figure out their legal issues because this is going to come down to a legal call from, I guess, the judge or whoever they're going to go in front of.
Yes, sir.
And they're asking for this six-month period to be able to do that. And our ask would be if we grant this, is to give them the right to get in there and clean it up and secure it until the, till we have some definitive answer from the courts as to how this is to be, to proceed. Could we take all these under one public hearing or we would have to individually go through each one of these?
I, I believe you'd have to go through each item, but, um, you could just ask for each public hearing if there's anybody else additional that would want to speak about that particular property.
Okay, very good. I understand. Very good. Go ahead. I'm sorry, Ms. Age, go ahead.
So I was going to say in the paperwork that is going to be a part of the partition, there are some questionable heirs involved. That's part of it.
Okay, no problem. Mrs. Spears again?
So Ms. Age, there are three properties, but if we agree on this first property to give you all an extension of 180 days, when the other two come up, we should do that pretty quickly in the same, same process for the other two properties. And you all will not have any contest to that and just go along with that. But I, I, now you do understand that you're going to have six months to get all three properties, but if we all agree on that.
Mm-hmm.
I, I can't promise what everybody else will do, but the other three properties, six months to, to get all three properties in order.
Yes, please understand that the issue has been not everybody being on the same page.
Good, but can you get them on the same page in six months?
But we will get them done in the next six months, yes.
I'm on, I'm on your side so far.
Yes.
Councilmember Joyner?
Um, if, if we're saying that we're ready to vote on extension for this one, I, I do think I would need to know what the, um, pressure point was that caused law enforcement to be the identifying party for the other two.
We'll talk about the other two, um, in the next public hearing, but to answer your question, um, there was, in my recollection, a, a problem with people hanging around that property's trash and garbage. Um, I think the initial complaint was about people entering the property that shouldn't have been in there or that type of stuff. Uh, but I don't have the specific complaint in front of me. I ju- I just recall it came from the police department and this is back in October of 2023.
Okay, thank you.
Very good, Ms. Rambor.
Just, just a, a point of clarification.
Yes.
Dealing with heirs, we, we've been, we go, we run into this quite often where there are multiple heirs and you just can't always get your back together or you can't always get everybody to come to the same conclusion. But even if you, even if for some reason during that six months, you can't get all the heirs together so you can get a lien or, or whatever, you do need to get it cleaned up and secured. You can do that without all the heirs agreeing.
I do understand.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Yeah, that's part of the plan.
Okay, all right, anybody else? Okay, Mayor Protem?
I, I think I wanted to kind of say the same thing, um, that if we offer this extension, that doesn't mean that you guys just don't do anything. And I'm, I'm wondering, but this is for Brian. Um, could we offer an extension, but then say in X number of days, we go back and look at it instead of waiting for the 180 days for it to come back to us? Is that possible? What is that?
Uh, my, my, I think, I think staff's recommendation would, would really be to, to set a time and we can obviously keep an eye on it. And if we have a public nuisance that arises, so say we find the building unsecured, we can enforce it through that avenue. Uh, but even with council passing this ordinance, we'll have the authority to keep the building vacant and secured, um, even if there is an additional extension provided on that compliance timeline. Uh, in terms of, uh, setting a time and then bringing it back and, and kind of leapfrogging it, um, I think staff would advise against that solely because of the time.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Okay. I guess the last thing I would like to, you to consider is just the fact that since the occupant has been gone, has there been any complaints then? Because I think that has been a real major contributing factor. Okay.
Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to say that all the occupants have not been gone from the property. I just wanted to let you know that part. Um, and we do still have items in the house, but we can't get it all cleared out. And, you know, just to keep away the, for lack of a better term, the riffraff from hanging around and being on the property. We can't get that done.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, but I've been doing my best to secure it because like I said, all of our things are still in the residence.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, just wanted that to be known.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Yes, sir, Ms. Waddell?
Ms. Renner, um, I know the staff recommendation is, is 90 days. Uh, if there were interest from the council to extend it to, to the 180, does, does staff have any major reservations with that that you need to make us aware of? Because I think it'll, it'll, this will roll into two, all three if we were to take that action.
Um, no, staff doesn't have any re- reservations about 180 days for this property. Um, the biggest concern was the occupancy, uh, when this was initially scheduled and filed, uh, which has since been resolved. So, um, no, 180 days would not be a problem with staff.
Very good. All right. Now I'm going to open up the public hearing and ask if anybody in the public wishes to speak uh, on this particular item, they can come forward. Seeing none, Madam Clark or is it Clark, um, we, we haven't received any additional commentary. Okay. Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for the wishes of council. I'm going to, um, we have a motion approved by Councilmember Spears, second by Councilmember Andrews.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
With, the motion is for suggestion of a, of 180 days.
Yeah, 180 days. And Kevin, you had made reference to the fact that to secure the property, clean, make sure it's cleaned, make sure that it's cleaned and, and the belongings are out of it and that we secure it because that was one of the issues in respect, I guess, some of the, the police action that was going there. So tha- that's, that's the motion.
Yeah, so the, the motion is, is to, to grant you all the 180 days, but is also to clean and secure the property as, as quickly as possible. Uh, I, I say this almost every single time. If, if you fail to do so on any of the three properties, I won't be as lenient when you come back. I, I'll have to go with what staff has recommended. And, and so I, we, we're giving you an opportunity to, to help yourselves. We, we want to help, so just make the best of it.
Yeah. And Ms. Age, I would also make a recommendation to stay in touch with Mr. Renner in regards to the legal processes to where we are with that too. That would be helpful. Okay, thank you. All right. So we have a motion approved by Councilmember Spears, second by Councilmember Andrews. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passed unanimously on first reading. Is there a motion to waive second reading? Motion made by Councilmember Waddell, second by Councilmember Joyner. Discussion, all in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passed unanimously on first as well as second reading. That brings us to our next item, which is item PH2, which is the ordinance directing the housing inspector to vacate, close and repair or demolish a dwelling in 905 Wooster Street as unfit for human habitation pursuant to Article 5, Chapter 16 of the Wilmington City Code and directing their notice be placed there on prohibiting its use or occupancy. At this time, I'd like to recognize again our city manager, Mr. Cottle. Mr. Cottle? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Renner, review this item as well.
Evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, counsel. Uh, 905 Wooster is the next property that we'll discuss this evening. Um, it's a single-family house. Uh, it's vacant. Uh, owner's heirs of George Benjamin Age Senior. Uh, you can see its location here. Uh, this is a view from Wooster Street. Uh, this began with a complaint from the Wilmington Police Department back in October 5th of 2023. The property is vacant. Uh, this went to housing code hearing, uh, June 24th, 2024. Um, had the family members in attendance. Order was issued in July. Uh, this compliance date was, uh, December 28th of 2024, uh, to repair or demolish. And there have been no, uh, efforts to improve this property since. And, uh, as I mentioned, we are in communication with the family. Tax value of this building is $50,300. Our estimated cost of repair is $79,318, which is 156%, which would be dilapidated by the city's minimum housing code. These are the sections that are outlined in the findings of fact. Um, here, we have a lot of issues with the roof. Um, when we get inside, we'll see that there, uh, is definitely some water intrusion. That the back half of the house is actually, um, pretty much rotted off. Um, you can see with the roof collapse here. Uh, this is inside and then it's the backside. Um, so we can see here, there's a lot of water intrusion coming into the building, uh, and the damage that's associated with that. Uh, this is moving towards the back of the house. A hole in the roof and it traveling down the wall. Um, and then that's the photo of the, the bathroom area. We can see the ceiling and roof have collapsed. And then that's the backside of the house. And the kitchen. So, uh, we're looking for approval of this ordinance to vacate, close, repair, demolish, um, mediate floor to keep the dwelling vacant. Um, so if we find it unsecured, we can secure it. Uh, and then we'll, uh, our initial recommendation was 90 days for the owner to repair or demolish. Um, I would stick with that recommendation on this one would be, I think, staff recommendation. Um, however, we're not opposed to the 180 days, um, that's been suggested. Uh, the reason I think 90 days is because of the condition. Um, however, I'll leave that to council's discretion.
Okay, very good. Any questions for, for Brian? Yes, sir, Mr. Rambor?
Wha- what is the story on this? I mean, is this, in the last house, we had a heir that was not cooperative, that was living in it and causing problems. Is this just, what, what's, what's going on here?
Um, this is a, a vacant house. I know that, um, from what I've seen, the occupants of, that were at 804 Russell's Alley occasionally went to this house. Um, I'd found dogs in there that also lived at 804 at one point in time. Um, uh, it's essentially vacant house that has had no maintenance on it. Um, I know that the family has a key and access to the house, uh, but I can't speak to any deeper story behind it.
Any, any utilities?
There, there's no utilities. There's no electric, no, no power. Um, it hasn't been in probably a decade.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Any questions? Okay. Yes, sir, Mr. Waddell?
So, if we kept it at 90 days, nothing happened, at what point does the city actually move forward with demolition? And to what extent? I mean, what, is, is all the cinder block gone? Is it a level and graded lot at that point?
Correct, yeah. When we do a demolition, we, we grade it and seed. Um, so it'll be, it would be a grassy lot on a demolition. Uh, in terms of when we would initiate the demolition, um, there would be no mobilization on demolition until after that 90 days. However, uh, if necessary, we may do an asbestos test or something like that to, to expedite, depending on the situation.
Just shooting from the hip, what, uh, what's it cost the city to do a demo like that?
Uh, it depends. I, if I, I think our, I'd say probably between 10 and 15,000. Uh, depends on the house. Uh, asbestos test is usually around 1,000 to 2,500.
Then we just put a lien on the property and once they, once they sort it out, then, uh, then if they were to sell the, the real estate, they would, uh, uh, their proceeds would be less than, than that lien, basically.
Correct.
To me, it'd be, if I, if I was that property owner, this one, this one, I, I think it's advantageous to move it forward as quickly as possible because it's going to be worth more as a vacant lot. That's just my opinion, but, all right, thank you.
Councilmember Spears?
Yeah, I kind of want to piggyback off of Councilman Waddell. Uh, but I had a question for you first. So, looking at the, the property valuation from 2024, um, how has that affected based on the properties that are, are around it? Because the, the middle property between the two properties sold for a half a million dollars. So does, does that not bring the value, I mean, and then this is in pretty bad condition, but does it, does it not bring the value up some?
So the 2025 tax value for this property, uh, for the building is 200, sorry, $2,200 is the, uh, building value from the 2025 tax assessment and the land value is 69,100.
So you didn't really answer my question. Did it, did it come up?
It, it, it went down. The, the tax value in 2024 was 50,300 and the tax value, uh, in 2025 is 2,200.
2,200, oh, okay. Yeah, I don't know. Okay, thank you.
Any questions? Thank you, sir.
I've got one question.
Okay, we got another question.
Is, um, is this a hazard to the neighborhood? I mean, it's, is it a risk of falling on somebody or I'm just?
I think, I think the house could stand there for the next six months and, and not fully collapse i- if that's what the question is. Um, in terms of a hazard to the neighborhood, I think its condition itself poses a hazard. Um, as, uh, Councilman Spears pointed out, there is a house in between the two houses we're talking about that is a new build. Uh, we've not heard anything from that property owner, um, about this, these, either of these properties. Um, so I, I would, I would say that if there was an extension provided for 180 days, um, we would hope that it would be resolved swiftly.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, anybody? Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, again, I'm going to recognize the, uh, property owner. If you want to come forward.
I don't, I don't have much more to add from this story except for the same occupants that were in the other property was kind of, they're very close and so they were in all of the properties, if that makes sense.
So, Ms. Age, you're, 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 you're trying obviously to secure the properties or to make some, to get some legal, um, the court system to determine the heirs and what's going to happen with these properties or whatever.
Yes.
Is your intention, if the court finds that obviously you have an interest in the property and the other heirs have an interest in the property, to fix this or to take it down?
So at this point, it would be either, I, I think that's part of our discussion, but we know that it probably needs to be demolished, but we do know that it needs to be secured because we have got, um, estimates from people to demolish. Um, but like I said before, when I've had people to go over, they were not able to get inside and look around completely because of some of the confrontation that took place.
Because of the legal issues between family members?
Because of the person, right.
I, I got you. Because the house is in very bad shape and, uh, this would take a significant amount of money to fix up. And, um, I'm, I'm just, this is my own opinion, just looking at it and with the roof and you can see the clear sky and the water just coming in there. This is, this is a significant, this is a total rebuild. I mean, whoever we look at will probably take it down anyway, so, okay.
We're aware.
Councilmember Andrews has a question here.
So I understand that, um, the same occupants that were occupying the other property were also occasionally occupying this property along with their animals. Um, but I think this is a completely different situation because we had a situation where a 59% dilapidated and this is like 156%. There's no real intention of saving this property.
I, I don't think that we can. I don't think that we can, but I would like to have, I'm, I'm an educator. I'm not a construction per- person. I would like to have a construction person go in and tell me what they can and can't do and be able to do that in a safe way and not have to deal with somebody, you know, threatening them. And then I can, we can make an adjustment. I mean, we can make a decision.
But the, the, the heir that was making the threats is no longer.
Now.
Has access to the property now.
Now.
Um, you said that you had gotten some estimates about demolition and do you know, could you share with us what those were?
Um, they were at the 10,000 and 12,000 range.
So about the same as what the city's talking about?
Yeah, so far.
So it, it, as far as that goes, it's not going to be, be any financial difference to you whether the city tears it down or whether you tear it down?
Um. No, but I don't have, I can't say no because I, I don't have somebody to go there at this point and be able to assess it completely. The person that went there before stood from the street to do it.
Okay. Um, the other property we talked about, that there's still personal property in there that would, that's. that would, that some people would like to retrieve?
Okay, so, okay.
It's okay, that's past tense. We already made a decision on that one. I'm just asking, is that the, it looks like there's nothing in here that is worth retrieving.
I'm not sure. I haven't been inside of that property or near it. I don't think that there's anything in there we want to retrieve.
We don't have any other heirs that are claiming that there's anything in there that they need to retrieve?
I don't have that.
And then, and then finally, have you received any offers on this property?
I have not at this point, no.
Because I tend to agree with my fellow council members here. I think it's going to be worth more as cleared land than it is with a dilapidated building on it.
I understand. I understand.
Mr. Rambor.
Mr. Renner, this may be a Ms. Everhart question, but I'm going to go to you first. We don't have to, when we do go the full, the full process and demolish, if there are multiple heirs, we don't have to have permission from all the other heirs that aren't cooperating. We, whereas if, does that, is that the case, whether they do it or we do it? You have to have permission from all the heirs to demolish it? City doesn't need that, do we?
Council's decision tonight would authorize our office to demolish the property whenever that time expires.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm going to open up the public hearing and ask whether any in the public wish to speak on this particular item. Madam Clerk, have you received any additional comments or anything? Okay, none. Seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for the wishes of councilmen respect to the item. We have a motion to approve by Councilman Rambor, second by Councilmember Andrews. Any further discussion?
With basically the same understanding that Mr. Spears put in the first one, that, you know, in the meantime, pardon?
Are you saying one eighty or ninety?
Well, I kind of, I think ninety is, but in order, in the meantime, to secure it, that's what I meant, yeah, the ninety days.
Yeah.
Okay, ninety.
I think this is different.
So, Mr. Rambor, your motion is to adhere to the staff's recommendation. Okay, very good. So everybody knows that, okay? All right, we have a motion approved by Councilman Rambor, second by Councilmember Andrews. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passing unanimous on first reading is a motion to waive second reading. Motion made by Mayor Pro Tim Barnett, second by Councilmember Waddell. Discussion, all in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passing unanimous on first as well as second reading. That brings us to our last, yes, sir, Mr. Spears.
Just making sure that they understand that we've made a difference between the first one and the second one.
Yes. Just so you understand, the first one given you one hundred and eighty days. The second one is ninety days, and then this one will be taken down by the city of Wilmington, demolished. Ninety days. Yes, ma'am. Okay. Next item was item PH three, which is an ordinance directing the housing inspector to vacate, close, and repair or demolish a dwelling in nine oh nine Worcester Street as unfit for human habitation pursuant to Article five, Chapter sixteen of the Wilmington City Code and directing their notice be placed there on prohibiting its use or occupancy. At this time, I'd like to recognize again our city manager, Mr. Cottle. Mr. Cottle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Once again, Mr. Renner.
This is the last one I have for you this evening. This is nine oh nine Worcester Street. Here you can see it, two lots over. This is the view from Worcester Street. As we've been discussing, this is the same heirs of George Benjamin Age Senior. So this was actually an officer's observation. The complaint from the police department was on nine oh five, and when the officer was at nine oh five, he noticed the condition in nine oh nine and initiated a case. This started on October fifth of twenty twenty three. Property was vacant, went to housing code hearing in June of twenty twenty four. Order was issued in July, order expired December twenty eighth of twenty twenty four. And there have been no efforts to improve this building. The tax value of this building in twenty twenty four was thirty five hundred, eight hundred dollars. Our estimated cost for repair is sixty seven thousand one thirty six, which puts it at one hundred and eighty eight percent, which is dilapidated by city's minimum housing code. And for reference, the twenty twenty five tax value is fifteen hundred for the building and sixty six hundred for the lot.
Sixty six hundred for the lot?
Correct. Sorry, sixty six thousand. Misspoke, thank you. Those are the sections of the minimum housing code that are in the findings of fact. This is the view from Worcester Street. We do have issues with the roof on this one. And on the backside especially. And then also in the siding, the floor system on this side of the house on the inside is pretty rotted. We'll see that when we get in there. And this is the, that back addition that the roof is also collapsing on. So this is inside. We have some holes in the roof and water intrusion. There are some rats in here as well.
There are some what?
The rats inside of here. The, the electrical meter is attached, but I, there's no power, but the meter is still on the house and the riser is still attached. I believe so, I believe we'll see it on the other side. So again, water intrusion coming in through the holes in the roof. This is that backside of the house I talked about where the floor is rotten out and the framing and floor systems are failing. And this is just some of the rat evidence that's in there. So with this property, we're looking at ninety days recommendation as well for this one due to the condition. Again, if council chooses to provide one hundred and eighty days, we wouldn't be opposed to that, but ninety days is our recommendation.
Any questions for Brian? Okay. Thank you, Brian. Again, I'm going to recognize the property owner. Ms. Age, you want to speak up again? Should have just had you a seat out front here.
I don't have anything to add further to this except for, you know, we're still adding, we're still asking for the six months.
On this one, you're asking for the six months? Okay.
It just helps me to make sure we're on the same page for all of them.
Mrs. Spears, I'm sorry. Mr. Spears.
So this might be the better of the three properties. So not an expert, not in real estate. Maybe you demolish the other one, sell that one. I don't know about the other one. Maybe you split that with the family that was then and take a little lump sum and, and. Yeah, I mean, based on what the house, this little blue house we see right here in the corner, based on what that house sold for, I mean, it's a windfall. And I, and I don't normally advocate for people to sell their property. I'm huge on keeping your property, passing it down generational wealth. But that other one on the other side is, I mean, and anything's possible. But I don't know what your finances are, but, you know, getting everybody on board and to have the financial means to do that. But, I mean, it just may be simple to just bulldoze it, sell it, fix what's left, fix the other two if you want, but, I mean.
I thank you for your advice and your opinion.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Rambor? Councilmember Rambor? Okay. Councilmember Andrews?
So this one is the worst of all as far as the cost of repair, is that correct? It's one hundred and eighty eight percent dilapidated, is that what I saw?
The, the cost of repair on this one is one hundred and eighty percent. That's in comparison to the tax value of the dwelling. So the tax value of this building, I believe, was actually the lowest overall. And even on the twenty twenty five rebalance, the lowest overall for tax value of the building.
How long has it been since somebody has been living in this house? The other one, we heard decades, this one?
Again, now that one, I'm not really sure, but I thought that a relative was in it in the last ten years, I think. Y'all, am I right? In the last ten years?
Ten years ago?
Yeah.
And do you know how long it's been since it's had utilities?
I'm not sure that, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I can't give you that information.
Just to start clarity, you're saying that this house has been vacant for ten years? At least ten?
Yeah, at least ten.
Okay. All right. And Brian, you're saying you're not opposed to one hundred and eighty days. I'm almost, I'm almost willing to say due to ninety days as well. And the reason I'm saying it is I want to get you to do something, okay? That's what worries me. Let me tell, I would say exactly what bothers me, okay, and worries me, and I brought the wrong word. But if we don't put fire under you, then in my opinion, I'm thinking you're just going to go back to Raleigh and the family's going to still be fussing and scuffing, and then one hundred and thirty days come along, one hundred and sixty days come along, and you go, oh, we got to do something. You know, and if I say you got to do it in ninety days, then it puts a little more importance in it.
And I thank you for that. I thank you for sharing that. The difference is, when you are dealing with heir property, you got to get everybody on the same page. And when I have, I'm just sharing my piece.
Yes, ma'am.
When I have one heir that is violent, and I have his wife and all these other people, there's not much I can do. And I tried to get help. I did call authorities. I couldn't even get a construction person in there, and I called several, and they all called me back and said, ma'am, I can't do anything. And I asked for assistance to get him out, and I tried to get the paperwork. But at this point, I came down from Raleigh, not only in June, I came down from Raleigh to get the attorney, to seek the attorney. I am here tonight because I am vested in it, and I do have the attorney that is filing the partition. So we are actively doing something. This is not the same that was before when somebody wasn't actively doing something. I am the granddaughter, and I was called in June, and I was not aware of everything that was going on, but I am here actively engaged trying to make it happen on a Tuesday night when my school is, we're calling for snow in Raleigh. So what I'm just saying is I am here.
Okay.
So there is a different person that is trying to take the lead on this.
So you would like one hundred and eighty days?
I am asking for one hundred and eighty days.
Okay.
Madam Meredith, question. And you know more about this, this is why you're the city attorney. In the, when you're partition, when you're, when you're splitting property up and you have heirs that can't get along or don't agree, some say they own it, some say they don't own it, you can't tell me what to do, this is whatever. When they finally do get into a court of law, and what will ultimately be the decision of the court depending on the heirs? Where they finally say, okay, we're going to sell the property and divide the proceeds among the thirteen heirs or the eleven heirs? How does that proceed? Because you, obviously, you have Ms. Age here that is saying that they would like to fix the property, one thing. But if the court turns around and says, since everybody can't agree and they can't come together, we're going to have to sell the property and then sell the, and give the, and split the proceeds. This is the way I understand it. Is that, is that true?
Yes, sir. It's actually, it's a partition as opposed to a petition. And so what that means is that the court will determine, is it going to go to one particular person? Is it going to be, is the property itself going to be split? And if so, what's the ownership going to be? Or it could just be to sell the property and divide the proceeds. Any of those things could happen. There's no guarantee which way the court will go. But she is correct that, that the first step will be to try to get them to come together and make that decision on their own as to, you know, who's going to be the person with the property.
Okay, and that process takes how long? If they've already asked the court, and Ms. Age, I think you made comment that y'all have already asked the court to start in that, in that way in regards to.
I talked to my attorney before this meeting, and he said that it would be filed in the next ten days. He also said that he would be making contact to Brian tomorrow morning.
Okay, so if it's within the next ten days, how long does that process of procedure take to partition?
Not guaranteed, but once he files the motion for partition, hopefully, it would be set for some sort of hearing within thirty, thirty days so that they could at least get the process started. That doesn't necessarily guarantee it'll be concluded within that time period, but that would be the hope. I mean, obviously, there are some that'll drag on, and it depends on how quickly they can, either the heirs can come to a decision or the judge can.
So within the one hundred and eighty days, within a six month period, if you have some heirs that want to keep the property, try to fix it, you have other heirs that want to sell it, whatever the case is, you're telling us that you feel that very confidently, I hope, that the court process would take, we could do that within the one hundred and eighty day period?
As long as all of the heirs are able to be served. That's usually the biggest problem with a petition. And so if they are all truly mostly here and we have addresses for them and they can get served through the court, then the hearing would be able to be set sooner, and hopefully, that would, that would move things along.
So in the event that you cannot serve an heir, you can't find the heir, the heir's in Arizona or wherever, and you can't find him, what happens then?
You just have to go through additional procedures, like serving them through publication and things like that that tend to take a little bit longer. But if they are all local, you can serve them either in person or through a local newspaper, or you do know where their addresses are and can serve them directly, then that will, that will definitely speed things up if you actually know where they are.
Right. And at this point, we do know who, we know we have the address for all the heirs. We do have that information. We just have some disputes about some people that were, who claimed they were heirs, and they're not.
Understand. But I understand your point, Ms. Age. If you have an heir that's in the property that is violent or is threatening people and you can't get anybody there to ask for them to give a repair, it makes your, your position much harder and the rest of the heirs' position, which I get that.
It's not negligent.
I understand. Okay, Councilmember Andrews had a question.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I really appreciate you, Ms. Age, that you have stepped up and come here from Raleigh several times and that you have, you know, this wonderful job of being an educator, and thank you for taking time away from that to come here and take care of your family. I just, I hear you, that you keep saying you want to get everybody on the same page, and I get that. I just, I just don't see that happening with this property that we don't even know. You have said that you have asked your attorney, that your attorney has said that they're still going to be looking for heirs. I've heard our attorney say that there are at least thirteen that she knows of. I don't necessarily think getting on the same page before we decide to do with this property is really going to make any difference at this point. I think that that decision can be made even after the property is torn down. Obviously, not all thirteen heirs or thirteen people who claim to be heirs are going to live in this property. And, and I really have my doubts that thirteen people can agree to who is going to get the property. I'm thinking that at this point, at one hundred and eighty eight percent dilapidated, that, you know, again, like the last property we talked about, you're going to be better off, you're going to get a better offer for this property with the house gone, and then, and you can split real money thirteen ways without getting on the same page first. So that's just my feeling at this point.
I do thank you for sharing that. I'm not delusional. I do understand that you may not get them on, on the same page. And that is, the goal is to do whatever we can that the family can benefit the most from. That is the true goal, whether it be fix them or demolish them or sell them. But my goal is that this partition, petition, however you want to pronounce that, is that it allows us to get the biggest benefit from the property, and we can continue with that and do whatever. That is the goal. If we don't get on the same page, then we don't, but we will do whatever benefits everybody the most.
Councilmember Spears?
Again, I'm rooting for you, but based on what you just said, I mean, the easiest way for y'all to get on the same page is if we push it down.
Well.
Then you don't have a choice.
I got you, but the part of this is you, you get to mediate. They help you with the mediation piece.
Right.
And having that person that is fighting tooth and nail against you being away from the picture, that helps so much.
But he has, he has an advocate.
I'm not sure if the advocate is really his wife.
Wait, wait, wait.
I'm sorry.
Let's not do that. Let's not do that. Let's not do that. Let's not do as the property terms.
But I just feel like that I'm in a better place now to do what I need to do, if that makes it.
Understood. And again, I'm advocating for you, but I get the six months, and I mean, I'll probably make the motion for the six months. I don't. I don't know if everybody will be on board with this time with the six months, but still the, the process in the 180 days still would have to occur in the 90 days where there, there has to be some motion.
If I am counting correctly, and I'm just being personal right now, if I am counting correctly.
You're educator now.
I am an educator, and I am an administrator of a high school, and so that means that I will, and I'm in a traditional high school. Six months would allow me time to be in Wilmington to ensure things happen. Does that make sense? Whereas 180 days, I'm taking away from my 2,000 students to be here to make it happen. So, yes, we can secure it because I have my uncles here. They can secure it, they can make sure things are where they need to be at, but I can have put, you know, boots on the ground, making sure things happen. That's what I'm asking for.
Just, I'm just curious. First of all, what high school?
I'm at East Wake Magnet High School.
Okay, got you. All right. Um, so if you have 13, 11 heirs, 13 heirs, wherever the case is, and some of the heirs are gonna put money into this thing, if you come to some kind of an agreement, and some heirs are not gonna put money into this thing, at the time of the sale, if you sell the property for its highest value, you're gonna have to split those proceeds with the individuals that don't give you money. You do understand that.
I understand that.
And you're, and you're okay with that?
Yes.
You're a philanthropist. I love you. Okay. Okay. Thank you.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Got you. Okay. I'm gonna open up the public hearing and ask for everybody in the public wish to speak on item PH3. Madam Clerk, have you received any additional commentary? Okay. I'm gonna close the public hearing and ask for the wishes of council. We have a motion to approve by Mayor Pro Tim Barnett. Mayor Pro Tim, is your motion, and second by Councilwoman Spears, is to give the 180 days?
My, my motion is to grant the 180 days, but I wanted to hear my fire, okay? I, I want, you know, I, I want you to hear my fire. I don't cuss, I'm leaving it to Luke, but I want you to hear my fire, okay? That we really want something done, okay? But I offer a motion that we, uh, extended 180 days.
Okay, we have a motion from Mayor Pro Tim Barnett, second by Councilmember Spears. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passed unanimously on first reading. Is there a motion to waive second reading? Motion made by Councilmember Joyner, second by Councilman Rivenmark. Discussion, all in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passed unanimously on first as well as second reading. Good luck, everybody. Our next item in business is our ordinances. Item 01 is an ordinance making supplemental appropriations to the Public Improvement Fund for a justice assistance grant in the amount of $62,545 for the Wilmington Police Department boat lift replacement and a portable camera system for New Hanover County. At this time, I'd like to recognize our city manager, Mr. Cottle. Mr. Cottle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Deputy Chief Alex Satella will overview this item for us.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, members of council. Uh, our boat lift was originally installed in 2013, and in 2019, it short-circuited on the down position. By the time we were able to pull it back up, it was not working anymore, and we'll have to replace it. Uh, the biggest thing for us is gonna be shorten our response timing. We have an emergency in the river. For example, if we have an emergency right now, we'll have to call Officer Phillips who's outside, we'll have to drive his specialty truck to special ops center and bring the boat down, which will take him an hour. And if we already have our boat on the lift, on a working lift, we can call Sergeant Raspet, who's also out back, and it'll take him a couple minutes to get downtown and put the boat in the river.
Very good. We have a question, Ms. Councilman Rivenmark.
When did you say that it, go, go back through the, put it in 2013, would you gonna do that?
And it short-circuited in 2019.
Okay, so in the down, so what, what have you been doing for five years?
Pulling the boat. Officer Phillips back there and Captain Phillips.
Why hasn't, why hasn't somebody been down here before now?
It's a money decision that.
Hell, everything we do is money. That's kinda important.
I agree, I agree.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you. Thank you. What are the wishes of council in respect to the ordinance? We have, uh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Spears, wait a minute. We have a motion approved by Council, Councilmember Andrews, second by Councilmember Joyner. Discussion, Councilmember Spears.
Mr. Manager, so this, this money has already been received, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's all I got?
Very good. All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passed unanimously on first reading. Is there a motion to waive second reading? Motion made by Councilmember Joyner, second by Councilman Rivenmark. Discussion, all in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passed unanimously on first as well as second reading. That brings us to our last item in business, which is our reports. Item RP1 is a report of council's appointments, committee for boards, commissions, and committees. At this time, I'd like to recognize Councilmember, uh, Chair Rivenmark, who is the chairman of that committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, we held a meeting on February the 3rd of this year. I was present. Councilmember Celeste Andrews was present, and Councilmember Luke Waddell was present, along with our, our city clerk and our city attorney. On the, our first, uh, recommendation is the City of Wilmington slash New Hanover County Commission for Women, reappoint Chan Pertikin with a term to expire 2/18/28, and appoint Elizabeth Bryant Richards with a term to expir- 2/18, to expire 2/18/28. And for the City of Wilmington slash New Hanover County Workforce Housing Advisory Committee, appoint Antravon Tate of the, uh, with a term to expire 9/20/25. He, by the way, is the chair of that committee. I would offer those up for your consideration.
We have a motion made by Councilman Rivenmark, second by Councilman Waddell. Discussion, all in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passed unanimously. This concludes the regular agenda. Are there any items to be brought forward by our city attorney?
Just a closed session motion, uh, Mr. Mayor, whenever it's appropriate.
Our city manager, Madam Clerk, Mr. Joyner, Mr. Waddell, Mayor Pro Tim, Mr. Rivenmark?
Uh, just a, a quick thing, uh, the cemetery that I maintain over on Princess Place Drive, if you have a, if you ever go down there, we've, we've been trying for about eight years to get a guardrail up along there to keep cars and what have you out from tearing up the cemetery stones, and last Thursday and Friday, the DOT installed our, uh, guardrail, and it, as guardrails go, this one's pretty. They powder coated it and it blends, so I just wanna thank, uh, uh, the folks over at NC DOT, particularly Chad Kimes and his group, and, uh, and the City of Wilmington for agreeing to maintain it should anybody, uh, come through there and do it damage. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Andrews?